Yes, Mayor Quorm is present for the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
Okay, to make it clear, Facebook Live is just an option and is not meant to provide public access. It's a thing that we...
It's an additional communication, but it is not required.
You can also watch the council meeting on Spectrum Cable Channel 35 with audio unlimited video. If you wish to participate, you can call in for the open session by dialing 888-251-2949 or 215-861-0694. The access code for today is 734-830-pound. And wait three seconds and press pound.
Mayor, you missed the number.
Oh, okay. So, did I miss the access code or the...
Yes, sir, the access code.
Okay, 734-5830-pound. Wait three seconds and press pound again. Once again, that's 734-5830-pound. Wait three seconds and press pound again. So wonderful. So now, operator, are there any callers in the queue that want to make general public comment?
Just a reminder that if you wish to enter the queue, please do so by pressing pound two on your keyboard keypad. All right, we do have a caller in the public comment queue.
Caller, go right ahead.
Caller, you are muted. Please go ahead.
Are we only able to comment on what's on the calendar for today?
Right now, you can comment on any agenda item right now.
Okay.
It has to be on the agenda.
I'm concerned about water projects. Yes, water projects, dealing with the water drought project. I'm wondering how much will that cost the taxpayers of Inglewood? And what does that actually involve? I have several questions, though. Should I say all my questions first and then you answer them?
No, actually, that's not how it works. What it is, you get to make your comment. You have about 2 minutes and 20 seconds left. And then we'll end up making the presentation and hopefully your questions will be answered. But this isn't a Q and A right now. It's public comment.
Do you have a Q and A? Because I have many questions.
No, ma'am, we don't have a Q and A.
That is not part of your city council meeting to involve the community? A question and answer, is that what you're saying?
We don't have a Q and A.
We can only make comments?
Yes, ma'am.
When do we get questions answered about the city council's decisions?
Well, actually, you can call your councilperson.
I never get any feedback from him. Nothing.
Okay, well, we'll try again. What is your name and phone?
Alternative method.
What's your name and phone number? And then we'll give your number to your councilperson. To your district number. What district you in?
My district number is District 1. My name is Emily Dixon. D is in David, I X O in. My phone number is 310-897-8995.
Okay, Ms. Dixon, we'll forward that to your councilman.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Operator, any callers? Other callers?
We have additional callers in the queue. All right, next caller, your line is being unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you very much for the time and opportunity to speak before the Inglewood City Council. I would very much like to express a concern that the city of Inglewood is moving in a direction that would be highly unsustainable for the young professionals who are seeking to make their...
Sir? 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 Sir, right now, you have to talk about an agenda item. So, point out the agenda item you're talking about. If you have a general comment, at the end of the council meeting, there's time for general comment.
I will receive my comment for the general comment. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Next caller?
All right, moving on to the next caller. Your line is being muted. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Cedric Morris with Thomas Safran and Associates. I'm calling in reference to Item DR5 and DR6 on the meeting agenda. On behalf of TSA, we're thankful for our partnership with the city of Inglewood as we work towards, together towards fulfilling the mayor and the council's vision for a vibrant, reinvigorated downtown Inglewood. We appreciate the city staff working with us, you know, recently and over the years to come up with an agreement that finds a win-win solution that allows us to help support the development of the ICC project while also ensuring that the current residents and businesses are considered in the planning process. So, I just wanted to call and say thank you again for the opportunity. We look forward to continuing to work with you all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Operator, any other callers?
No additional callers in the queue at this time.
Okay, with that, we will close... We will close general public comment. And now, we're going to see if we have any members in the library that wish to make public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll close pub... Okay.
Good morning, council. Mr. Darryl Goode, I'm the area director for the NAACP. And we're just here...
You're gonna get a little closer to the mic.
Okay, which one? I got two here. Can you hear me?
Here, we hear you now.
Okay, good. Good afternoon. I'm Darryl Goode. I'm the branch president of Santa Monica, NAACP, but I'm also the area director. And we're just coming to just make a comment that we... I know some of the mayor and the council. And we have confidence, but we got a concern.
Okay, Darryl, two things, two things. You're gonna have to speak a little louder.
Okay.
And also, is this on a specific agenda item?
Redistricting.
Because if not, we'd have to wait till the end of the meeting. Is this a specific agenda item you want to talk about?
Redistricting.
Okay, well, then, here we go. You're on it.
No, but he has to wait till the public...
Oh, you'll have to wait for the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, and that'll be in a few minutes.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam City Clerk?
City Council?
Aye. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes?
Has the notice of the hearing been given in the time form and manners been received on the matter?
No communications have been received. Mr. Fields, mayor, council introduced the redistricting maps that was presented to council last Tuesday. You guys selected map D. And so, now, that is being brought forth for your consideration to move forward with the redistricting process. As you know, we have 174 days to get our maps adopted and then also submitted to the county as then... Until we have the city redrawn. Yes, sir.
Really? You mean we couldn't have an election in November?
No, sir, we would not be able to.
Pause it.
So, I would be like the mayor forever?
Forever and ever and ever and ever. And ever and...
Okay.
He's gonna speed it right up.
Right, right.
Yeah, we'll get right on that.
But I do have Mr. Johnson here in the audience with us in case you guys have any questions. He's here today to answer any questions from the National Demographic Corporation.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're at the public comment portion. Are there any public comments, operator?
Comment? All right, and I do see a hand raised in the queue. Your line is being muted. Please go ahead.
Yes, my comment is, I would like the person, the professional who is involved with demographics, if he could explain what this... Why District 4 or the model 4 is the best for Inglewood? That has not been discussed in the... With the city council members. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Operator, any other callers?
I do not see any additional hands raised in the queue at this time.
All right, we're gonna go to the library lecture hall. Mr. Goode, this is your time.
Okay, appreciate it. We are... We're here today. I'm here with the branch president of Inglewood.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Is the microphone on?
Can you hear me?
The microphone is on because I can hear him.
Can you hear me now?
He needs you to lean in. We apologize. Lean in, we'll get a longer microphone next week.
I'm a senior citizen.
I get it, Darryl.
Okay. We're just... I'm just here for... Let you know we're gonna be contacting you for inquiry. I know you've been going through your redistricting process. I know Inglewood branches have got a concern or complaint about the community not being informed. And we're not making any judgment calls this time because I understand you've been meeting on it and talking in your council meetings. So, we're just here because we have a complaint. But we will be involved and try to get the community involved so they could be educated as what this process is gonna be. And we'll be reaching out to you at some time in the near future.
All right, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Good to see you, Darryl.
Good to see you.
Mr. President. Are there any other speakers? All right. Okay, are there any other speakers?
Good afternoon. My name is Ms. Kelly, K-E-L-L-I, Cliff, C-L-I-F-T. I'm a former resident of the Regent Hotel in La Brea, which demolishing for apartment buildings. And again, I've let it be known to mayor and city council, I never received any form of settlements for being a severe victim of crimes in that building. And so, when you redistrict, the apartments, housing, I have to fall somewhere in the line of settlement money. And the type of crimes committed against me, radiation, rape in the sleep, and theft of my personal property. And I must be a part of the redistricting... Redistricting... Excuse me. For housing, immediately housing and/or settlements. Kelly Cliff, in a reference, please write this down. Kelly A. Cliff versus Los Angeles District Attorney's Office, et cetera, all. Please reference. I need housing and the redistricting... Excuse me. I must be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other members of the audience that wish to speak? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. We receive public comments. Motion away further reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye. Councilwoman Morales introduces the ordinance adopting the final draft map as the new council's district boundaries in accordance with the Fair Maps Act. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Mayor Butts, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider an ordinance of the city of Inglewood, one adding section 2-201 of Article 5 of Chapter 2, 2, adding section 5-112.1 of Article 7 of Chapter 5, 3, adding section 7-53 of Article 5 of Chapter 7, and 4, adding section 7-79 of Article 7 of Chapter 7.
Continue the hearing to April 5, 2022 at 2:00 p.m. Consent calendar, Items 2 through 14.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye, DR1.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution amending the 2021 through 2022 annual budget to continue funding the P672 Highway Safety Improvement Program.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye, DR2.
Staff report recommending award of contract and approval of an agreement with Stefan Dorick Equipment Rentals, Inc., for the water main replacement fiscal year 2021 through 2022, project per bid number CB22-02.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dodson? I'm sorry, Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye, DR3.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution amending the 2021 through 2022 fiscal year budgeted positions.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye, DR4.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution to designate a representative Public Works Director to sign a California Department of Water Resources grant application under 2021 Urban and Multi-Benefit Drought Relief Grant Program.
Move 1 and 2.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye, DR5.
Staff report recommending approval of a memorandum of understanding regarding the Inglewood Transit Connector construction commitments with S.T. Market D3 LLC.
Move 1 and 2.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye, DR6.
Staff report recommending approval of a memorandum of understanding regarding the Market Street revitalization efforts with B. Queen Market LLC.
Move 1 and 2.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Mayor Butts?
Aye. SPH1.
Staff report requesting that a public hearing be set to consider the following actions associated with the Inglewood Transit Connector project. One, adoption of a resolution certifying an environmental impact report, EAEIR 22018-073, adopting sequel findings of fact and adopting mitigation monitoring the reporting program. Two, adoption of a resolution adopting amendments to the land use, safety, and circulation elements of general plan amendments to include goals and policies for the Inglewood Transit Connector project. Three, adoption of a resolution approving zone change number 202022-001 to establish a transportation corridor overlay zone. Four, introduction of an ordinance approving zoning code amendment number 2022-001 to make modifications to Chapter 12 of the Inglewood Municipal Code related to the Inglewood Transit Connector project. And five, adoption of a resolution adopting the design standards and guidelines for the Inglewood Transit Connector project.
Set the public hearing for April 5, 2022 at 2:00 p.m. Madam City Clerk, when you were in elementary school, the teacher always called on you to read?
I was thinking the same thing.
All right.
It happens sometimes.
A1.
Thank you, mayor. There's no reports from the city attorney's office.
CM1.
Mayor, there are no reports from the city manager's office.
CC1.
Yes, mayor, thank you. I would first like to just say this, that, you know, I was tasked with doing a job that I had no knowledge of doing. And when I accepted the opportunity, not knowing what was ahead, I was nervous, but I was thankful for the opportunity. I'm so thankful for our attorney, Michael Pan. He's been so instrumental with helping me throughout this process. My staff for their tireless evenings, being here at 8, 9 o'clock, working on the weekends, phone calls at 10 o'clock at night. Thank you guys so much. The effort is not in vain. You know, my folks in the media team, Thomas Bun and KD, you know, I would call them 9 o'clock in the morning and bug them on a Saturday or, you know, bug them while we're out in the street and say, hey, I need this. And they were there. And then Elsa and Abby, you know, thank you guys so much for allowing my process to go smoothly. Because a lot of times, it's the person in the forefront that gets the recognition, but the people in the background, they don't get that. And so, without my staff and the entire team of the city of Inglewood, you know, Josh Howe making sure that we get things placed on the city's website, it doesn't go unnoticed. And I'm extremely thankful because I was new to this and I'm thankful for the experience. In regards to Doug Johnson stepping up to the plate and helping us to move the city forward with redistricting and redrawing the lines and changing things and getting it back, he was so professional and I thank him for that as well. Also, so with that, I just wanted to say thank you because the next time, it'll be finished. And so, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Then, I would like to remind our residents that there is a special primary election for our state Assembly District 62, held on April the 5th. Drop boxes are now open at Rogers Park and also Ed Vinson Jr. Park. And then, you can also mail your ballots in. You do not have to put a stamp on it, just drop it in the mailbox and it'll get sent out to the county register recorder's office. And then, there's a quote by Condoleezza Rice, and it says, in regards to National Women's History Month, "I want to encourage all women to remember that the differences can be a strength." That's what it is. A difference can be a strength. And so, I apply that to what I've been going through for the last two and a half months. And then, lastly, ma'am, I'm asking that you close the meeting in honor of my great nephew. His name is General Samaje Ogilvy. He was five years old and he was beaten to death by his father. And they lived in Henderson, Nevada. Thank you so much. That concludes my remarks.
What was his last name?
Ogilvy. He was five.
So sad. The Inglewood Successor Agency is in session, CSA2.
Approve of the minutes of the meetings held on March 1, 2022, and March 8, 2022.
Approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Successor Agency members Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Chairman Butts?
Aye. We'll adjourn the successor agency. The Housing Authority is in session, H2.
Approve of the minutes of the meetings held on March 1, 2022, and March 8, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Housing Authority members Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Chairman Butts?
Aye, we'll adjourn the Housing Authority. The Finance Authority is in session, F1.
Approve of the minutes of the meeting held on March 1, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Finance Authority members Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Chairman Butts?
Aye, we'll adjourn the Finance Authority. The Parking Authority is in session, P1.
Approve of the minutes of the meeting held on March 1, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Parking Authority members Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Chairman Butts?
Aye, we'll adjourn the Parking Authority. The JPA is in session, JPA1.
Approve of the minutes of the meeting held on March 1, 2022.
Approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Joint Powers Authority members Padilla?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Falk?
Aye.
Chairman Butts?
Aye, there are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We'll adjourn the JPA. We're at public comment. For one minute, persons wishing to address the city council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time. Operator, are there any callers?
I do not see any callers in the queue at this time.
Okay, we'll close that portion of public comment. Are there any members of the public at the library lecture hall? Go right ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. First, Mayor Butts, I just want to call to your attention that despite the disclaimer that you attempted to make at the beginning of the proceeding, you guys have listed on the website as well as the agenda four different options for the community to be able to view and participate in all of these.
We need you to pop right into the microphone because we want to hear exactly what you have to say.
Okay, can you start my time over?
You're gonna have to get closer to the microphone, ma'am.
I mean, I can't bend down too much. I will project my voice more. Do you mind starting my time over?
No, I'm not gonna start it over, but you can project your voice.
You're interrupting me. So, I want to say that this legislative body is not in compliance with AB 361. AB 361 requires that this legislative body not only determine that meeting in person would present an imminent health risk, but also requires it to develop a plan in the event of a technical disruption during a virtual meeting. This legislative body held a city council meeting on March 1, 2022. A technical disruption occurred during that meeting. In fact, only six seconds after the virtual meeting started, it ended. AB 361 specifically states that in the event of a technical disruption, the public agency cannot take any further action on the agenda until the issue is resolved. This council failed to comply with this requirement because the council did move forward with every item on the agenda, including holding a public hearing regarding redistricting. Therefore, as it has been mentioned several times, this... as it has been mentioned several times, this legislative body is in violation of the Brown Act, AB three sixty-one, and the Fair Maps Act. So, I want to know what plan has the council developed in the event of a technical disruption during a virtual meeting, and where the recording of the city council meeting that was held on March first, twenty twenty-two is, and why it has not been posted online for the public to view. And Mayor Butts, when you began to interrupt me, I was specifically saying that the city has to give the public, um, a list of ways in which we can attend and participate in these meetings. So, you guys have put on the agenda, as well as on the city council meet-
Okay, we've given you now-
On the city-
Two, two and a half minutes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mayor Butts, but you guys have given us four different options to participate.
Okay, okay, so now you're, now you're, you're done, and we're gonna about to silence your microphone. Uh, Facebook is not considered one of the ways to comply with the Brown Act. It's something that we do in addition to. So, that's not a reason to redo the council meeting. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, didn't you say?
I said that before the meeting. Right. Thank you, ma'am. Alright, are there, are there any, uh, speakers? Doesn't look like it. Okay, now with that, we'll close public comment, and, uh, now we'll go to council comments. Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you. I guess some folks just don't listen, but that's alright. They'll learn. Uh, first off, I just wanna say that, uh, I wanna give a congratulations to, right here in our backyard in District Number Two, is, uh, Don Lee Farms, uh, with Donald Goodman, uh, the owner. Uh, they're celebrating forty years of being in business here in our city, so I wanna acknowledge, uh, him and his company. They're one of the bigger employees, or employers, of, uh, folks, uh, in the area. So, uh, congratulations to Don Lee Farms. Uh, I also wanna congratulate, uh, our Planning Commission. Went to a training event last week, and I wanna thank Chris Jackson and Mindy and the folks that, uh, took 'em and, and made sure that they, uh, you know, had a real good training session and also had a good time. You know, when you go to a training session, you should enjoy yourselves. So, I trust that they did. Uh, based on the feedback I got from my commissioner, Mr. Rice, he enjoyed it and was very grateful and thankful for the opportunity. So, thank, uh, thank you and your staff, Chris, for putting that together for everybody. Uh, you know, Ayesha, I don't know what to say of them, you know, thoughts and prayers for your nephew, the general. You know, I mean, that's so, so sad and, you know, very unfortunate, very unfortunate. Uh, mayor, I'd ask that you also close in the memory of a gentleman that you and I both worked with for many, many years at the Santa Monica Police Department. He passed away just over a week or so ago, Eric Gobble. Uh, he was a police officer in Santa Monica, uh, bigger than life, six foot seven, what, about two fifty?
At least.
At least, and he was the, uh, heavyweight boxing champion in the police Olympics. Uh, he was a gentle giant, and, uh, may his soul rest in eternal peace. I was also just notified earlier today that a neighbor of, of mine that, you know, recently moved away, uh, uh, passed away, uh, just last week. Uh, so please, uh, if you would include also, uh, Martin Zurla, Z-U-R-L-A. Uh, I mean, he was a, a teacher, a professor, an artist, and he taught art. Uh, so, I mean, he was just a, a great person. Uh, so my thoughts and prayers to his family, to Kathy, his wife, and also to Eric's wife, Judy, uh, you know, to comfort them in these, uh, times, you know, but just for me, I celebrate those lives, you know. I mean, we mourn folks, but I also celebrate the lives that they had. They touched so many people in so many different ways, and I would like to just thank the three hundred block of East Hillsdale. The mayor and I had a chance to go to a block club there. Great turnout, some delicious killer food, man. Oh, my goodness, but, uh, great community. It was good to see folks come back out. So, uh, with that, thank you, enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Falk, from District Four.
Thank you, mayor. Um, just a couple of announcements. I just wanted to remind District Four residents that I am having my virtual town hall that will be happening, uh, next Wednesday, uh, March thirtieth at six PM, and so we're gonna give updates on, um, a lot of different topics that are pretty, um, that are of interest for District Four residents. So, please mark your calendars and plan to attend. I also want to give a big shout-out to our, um, Di- Director of Public Works, Louis Atwell, and our Director of Economic and Community Development, Chris Jackson. I had a, um, Homeowners Association meeting, um, last night, actually, and they came on to the meeting with me and assisted me with a lot of questions, and sometimes those meetings can be confrontational, and I just want to thank both of them for just being there, supporting me, and, and, um, helping to guide and navigate through a lot of the questions and concerns of the, of the HOA residents. So, thank you. And, um, I also want to, uh, say to our Madam City Clerk, I am so sorry to hear about the, um, the little man, he's five years old, general, that passed away. It almost makes me wanna cry. I, um, I have a hard time dealing with, um, those type of issues, so that's horrible. Um, my condolences to your family. That's all I have, mayor.
And just to lead with that, Ayesha, our condolences. I mean, whenever you hear about anything with children and stuff, um, for today, I really don't have, uh, much more to add, mayor, so I'll just thank you for coming out, everyone.
Okay. Um, I wanna let people know once again that Facebook is not a means of complying with the Brown Act. It's a courtesy that the city provides, and if you lose your internet connection, you're gonna lose your Facebook feed. Uh, we do post our council meetings on YouTube, um, when available, and, uh, right now, in this time that we're, we're in, our phone call-in is our methodology, and that's our compliance. And so, I thought I said it before the meeting, but I'll say it again. Um, I wanna close the meeting in the name of Martin Zurla. Eric Gobble, who, uh, was born one year to the day earlier than me, we always laughed about that. He was born in fifty-two, I was born in fifty-three, and so, it's very sad. He was, you know, relatively young man. Uh, before I close, finally, I want to say, um, on behalf of the council, happy birthday to Angela Allen, whose birthday is Saturday. I think she'll be twenty-nine or something like that. Alright, and, uh-
Fifteen?
How do you're so young?
And, and, and I, I just give our hearts to you, Madam City Clerk, on the passing of General Samaje Ogilvy. This is something that should never happen, uh, ever, and, uh, and our hearts go out to you. And with that, we adjourn.
Thank you, ma'am.